Meeting of the Novi City Library Meeting for September 28, 2023. Shall we stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible.
I'll ask the secretary to do the roll call, please.
Trustee Chair Currie.
Present.
Trustee Crawford is absent, excused. Trustee Dooley is absent, excused. Trustee Gawalapu.
Yes, present.
Trustee Guramurti is absent, excused. Trustee Sturing.
Present.
And Trustee Bartlett is here, four members.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to either approve or modify the agenda.
Yeah.
Just on the consent agenda. I mean, I'm sorry, the regular agenda first.
Yeah, just on the matters for board action A. That's a pretty sizable thing. I was not either the committees that was reviewing those. This is the collection development policy. So I'm happy to go through it if you guys prefer to. Otherwise, if we want to wait till everyone's here, I do have, I am going to have a number of comments to make. I know in the past we've gotten in trouble when we try to make amendments on the fly and things like that, which I can do, and again, I can submit those afterwards. But since there's four of us here, I kind of leave it to the rest of you, whether it's something we want to tackle today or not.
I do need some time to review that, so let's.
What I would propose is that we take it up and we can get the discussion or the comments, but it wouldn't be with the idea that we would be passing it today, but at least get the comments that the non, the members that weren't on the committee that didn't have a chance to comment at the committee level, but we'll take, we'll talk about it, but we won't, won't do a resolution, try to pass it.
That sounds good.
Is that unfair?
Yeah, that's good, and I might, my, do you want to make that, kind of make A come after D, so the important work done, or it's up to you, that's just a suggestion.
I'm amenable, it doesn't make any difference to me, but I'm amenable. Would you prefer that A be D?
Yeah.
Okay, so A will be D, and B will be A, and C will be B, and D will be C.
There ought to have been a simpler way to say that, but I couldn't think of what it was. Thank you.
Okay. So let's, can I, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Would that change?
I so move.
I approve.
Moved and seconded. We'll call a roll. Secretary.
Trustee Gawalapu.
Yes.
Trustee Sturing.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Chair Currie.
Yes.
Motion passes, 4-0.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of July 27, 2023, the regular board meeting, and also the approval of the claims and warrants for accounts 271 and 271, which are in pages 12 through 14 of our booklet.
President Sturing.
I made, that is a mistake, actually. It should be August 24, 2023. Sorry, that's a misread.
Oh. Glad you corrected that, and I didn't correct it as I was reading. So would that change? Can I entertain a motion to either approve or modify the consent agenda?
I approve it.
Been moved. Anybody second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Would the secretary call a roll?
Trustee Sturing.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Gawalapu.
Yes.
Trustee Chair Currie.
Yes.
Motion passes, 4-0.
Currently, we have no presentations for this evening, and it's not changed. I see nobody in the audience, so I will skip through the public comment presentation that I normally make if there's anybody in the audience, but there's nobody here, so there's nobody going to make a comment. Students represent, are you doing that?
I am this evening, yes. I'm happy to take any questions or comments regarding the student representative report on pages 15 and 16, provided by Abai Karkala. Just wanted to let all of you know that Abai's term has ended with the student seat, and I'm working with the city council. It takes a couple months, hoping for our October meeting that we would have a new student already in place. I wait on them in order for those appointments to occur. But we are working to meet with Abai for a final thank you and for his years, his two years of service on the council. So more details to come. He has a conflict now with a class. I was hoping to invite him to a board meeting. I'm not sure if he'll be able to make it to a board meeting, but we'll make sure we give you a photo and touch base with him if, if he's not able to come in person, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No other comments about the student representative report. I'm going to move on to the president's report. This is a chance for any of the board members to make any comments or experiences or involvement with library activities that isn't otherwise showing up in the agenda. I will start first by indicating that I've had the pleasure in the past month to basically attend an online seminar that was put on by the Michigan Library Association and various other participants, and also a community presentation at the Penn Theater. Both of these dealt with what's a very current topic in national libraries across the country, which is book bans and challenges and things of that sort. I found these very informative. Come to the conclusion, at least in my opinion, you know, there's a couple of challenges, a couple of different types of challenges that are going on. Some which I believe people legitimately feel they should be challenging a particular book or a particular, but then there's also others that just kind of go from library to library almost to cause issues and costs. And so it's very important that we have policies in place to address those in the proper way. And we do have pretty good policies in place, but we are continuing to review them and update them. And for myself, attending these two seminars was very helpful in focusing on, on some of those issues that you'd want your library policy to be in a better position to deal with the challenges and not really become overrun with paper and challenges that are meant more to disrupt than to truly challenge a book or the location of a book. So that's my experience the past month, and I don't know if any other members have want to elaborate on things they've done.
Yeah, actually, I attended the same thing. I appreciate them putting it on. I think it was, the group that put it on was, I was a little confused, I forgot the name of it, the Liberty, it was a Liberty something, but it was.
It was, it was hosted by the Friends of the Plymouth District Library and the Cantley Library.
District, yeah.
Yeah, both, both Friends groups from both of those libraries hosted it.
Okay, and the speakers were, it's a good assortment scattered across town of, I think they had a little more on the school library side experience than on this, than on the municipal library. You know, one of the things, I took away a few things from there, which is, yeah, obviously this is, you know, libraries have been political footballs for at least a half a dozen years, if not more now, in different respects, and this is our, sadly, the latest place all the libraries find themselves in. Couple of takeaways I found there is, you know, you have, I feel like a lot of library controversy is really groups arguing against edge cases, right? And I, I think that's inflammatory in both ways, and so, and I really appreciate one of the librarians, I thought she was in Troy, but, and I'll give you an example, like, you know, we use the word book ban. It's really about whether or not that book should be in a library. Nobody's saying that book shouldn't be available elsewhere or in different places, and vice versa, same thing, extremism and all things. We know, we know that people need to have access to information, stuff like that. So I think there's a middle ground, and that's going to be the struggle for libraries to find it, because we're ultimately about a community. And I think there was one word I took away, I found one word very useful, I found one statement rather silly. The really useful word I said, ultimately what people are discussing about it are things developmentally appropriate. And, and that's a discussion we all will have, what's the right time for people, everyone does in their house, what's the right time for my kid to see this, what's the time for them to see that? And that's, from the time, this has always been an issue with all of us, right? You know, every house is different, everyone's values are system, but we have to come together as a community and figure out how to facilitate that. I mean, that's the ultimate challenge. You know, and then the other thing is we have to, we have to stay away from divisive and unhelpful language. Like I said, everyone knows that when you throw out the word book banning, you're trying to conjure one image, when you try to conjure up grooming, you're conjuring it up with another image, none of that's what's really going on here. But I just remember one statement, somebody was saying, you know, sometimes they're taking one slide or one page out of context and judging a whole book by it, and I thought to myself, how many times insurance don't have to cross their legs for basic instinct to get its R rating? So, but otherwise, although it was a good discussion, I think it's, this is the challenge of our time, that, you know, I think it's just something we're going to all have to get involved with, so.
Any other trustees have any comments, experiences?
No, I didn't.
Brian.
I just wanted to thank the library staff for the summer music festival. We ended up well, as usual, at the high point with Elvis, and I think Gail did an absolutely great job this summer.
Thank you. I'll be happy to pass that along to her. It was, you are correct, that the Elvis event, each, each program, I think, built momentum and built more attendance, and we did receive over 300 in attendance at the very last event. So we will continue to work. I believe our three years of working on that event has built an audience that will follow us and that enjoys the music, and Gail Anderson is the person who has found wonderful performances and musicians in order to take part. And I also would like to put a plug in for the Friends of the Novi Public Library, they are the ones that actually hosted those events for us, paid for most of the performances that occurred through the summer, and then Paradise Park for letting us have the park pavilion as our location at no cost. They have been a fantastic partner over the summer, actually in general, but the summer is when they really do help us out by providing that space on those Thursday nights, but also then they are an opportunity, they give an opportunity for our children who are reading once they finish the program to enjoy an evening at the park and have two hours where they can have fun, and that is at, at no cost to those who attend. So two great, two great groups that have helped us out over the summer. Thank you, I appreciate that, Trustee Bartlett.
Yeah, I didn't realize Elvis was our closer every year.
He, well, he's been the last two years.
Okay.
And he does a great job.
It's now tradition.
Right.
Oh, I just wanted to mention too, I think, I don't know if, even though it's almost a month away, but it's the last meeting before, the fundraiser at Applebee's?
Yes.
Yeah, just.
Yes, that'll be, that's a Friends event. Actually, there's two, the two, they have two events. If you look at your agenda, I put them in for you.
Oh, there are.
We have the, we have a Vera Bradley event on 10/28, but the Applebee's event, so it's the same week, so October 25th, you can dine in, you can take out or pick up, and that's from 4 until 10:00 PM at Applebee's. And then the Vera Bradley event at the 12 Oaks Mall is from 10:00 AM until 5, sorry, yes, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and that's at 12 Oaks. Both of those events are fundraisers for the Friends, which ultimately ends up coming back and supporting the library in some form or fashion. So thank you, appreciate you pointing that out, Trustee Chair Currie.
Treasurer's report.
Okay, so we had, the finance committee just met with Julie this week, and, and so we were, kind of are updated for quarter one, and those will be, if you look at pages 19 and 20, in the fifth column, the great, everything that's in yellow is, things that have gotten changed. So things like, for example, we know like our state penal fine money and some of the updates on our actual salaries and things like that. So these are mainly for Trustee Gawalapu, since you weren't here last year. One, one of the big things we undertook last year was kind of a salary study and adjusting our wages to make them competitive and things like that. And those are phased in kind of in two phases. So from a budgetary standpoint, it was, I'm not saying invisible, but it's, you don't see the full impact till right now.
Hmm, okay.
So, and I guess the, as you go through that at the bottom page 21, what you can see the change it does from what we approved to where we are, is we approved with a projected deficit of 277, now our projected deficit's about 500K. So obviously something we'll have to keep an eye on. I will say in the past vacancies have kind of wiped out those deficits. This year, what we don't know is because we were successful in adjusting our salaries, it seems like the vacancy number has dropped off.
It is.
So.
Yes.
So.
We currently have, we, we have, there are four part-time positions, three clerks and a shelver currently that will be, that are open October, November, but I would look for those to be filled, you know, within November to December.
Yeah.
And then we'd be full staff.
Right.
Our full-time positions are completely filled. New employees have started, most started before, if not on September 11th, right around that time period. So just a couple that we have still to complete, and then it will be a full staff, and we'll be running completely to budget.
Then on page 220, page 22, you'll see a lot of changes, but most of, this is the other, the other fund, whether you call it the capital fund or the special fund or whatever, but.
272.
272. Most of the changes really are carry forward, the projects carrying forward from last year or projects that have been canceled type of thing. It's probably a flaw in our system that we don't carry the funds forward when we move the project forward, which is why it shows an increasing usage of funds, but what it doesn't show is that we didn't spend that money last year. So that's, it's a little deceptive there.
And currently, the city is in their two-week audit, so you'll note on page 23 and 24 when it comes to the financial report that we, I'm sorry, not on that report, but on the page 28 and 29, for the balance sheets, it, it has a year not closed notation on both of them until we actually have the full audit completed on page 28 and 29. I believe they'll have approval. I should see the approval by October, and I, I will probably have those numbers reflected in the October, well, it won't be till November, because November shows October numbers. So it, by November, you'll have everything caught up, you'll have the first quarter also, based on us making some decisions this evening for what, for where we stand with our, with our funds. And also, if you notice, we haven't received our tax revenue to come in yet.
Yeah, go get it.
Yep, so, right, right. So, so they, those things clean up by the time October's financials are done.
Yeah, I always found that funny that we literally 000.
Right, right.
Boom, we're rich.
Yes. You have to wait for people to pay the payments, right? And to collect the money. Yes.
So I believe that's all I really have.
Yep.
Okay, any questions for treasurer?
Yep.
Moving on to the director's report, so you, Julie.
Yes, so I do want to take a few minutes to note a number of staff that are having years of service and anniversaries at the library coming up in October. The first employee is Pat Ameriscondri, she's in our support services department, 21 years. Kit Ming Tang, she's in our support services department, 15 years. Kristen Abbott, support services, 14 years. Linda Bruin, information services, 14 years. Steve Pelizi, he's a sub in information services, 11 years. Emily Miller, a sub, information services, four years. Latanya Phillips, a sub, information services, four years. Emily Lankar, support services, two years. Gabrielle Stanjes, support services, two years. Austin Weberly, information services, he just moved from support services to information services as a librarian, received his degree and applied for a position that we had internally. And so his years of service is two years. And then Amy Crockett from administration, two years. So I congratulate them, and happy anniversary to all of that staff. Then on page 31, you'll see some information about read and recreation. This is a program we're doing with the parks and rec department for September and October, where you can get out into the parks and into the library. It's a bingo card that you follow, and you try to accomplish certain things on the card, and then you can enter in for a raffle. So it's trying to get people out in the community to our parks and the library, great partnership that we have with them through October. I also, on page 33, wanted to point out, we're getting ready for our community read. This is a wonderful opportunity where we partner with six other libraries locally to bring in an author, and this year it's Amiko Jean, the title is Mika in Real Life, so a wonderful fiction book that we will highlight, and the author will be in attendance on October 24th at 7 o'clock. There are still a few more seats available, please register. I can tell you that we're over 170 already registered for the event, we can only accept 200. So it's, it'll be a great event, and always when we bring in authors, it's really great to hear from them, you know, how they are inspired to write their stories and then also their experiences. So we're very excited to be hosting that at, at MPL in October. And I did give you a cafe update, and as you can see, it's a year ago, I did ask for the cafe manager to give us the last year, which would be 22, 23, so that also will be coming, but I wanted you to see how they did in the summer. I know you had already received the year before, but just wanted to put in perspective, you know, they took that loss really for the year, but the summer they did fairly well, and they had a little bit of a profit. So I'll bring you the next report for just this fiscal year that we just finished up, and give that to you soon. And then I have other reports that come from different departments. If you have any questions, please let me know, I'm happy to answer them.
And just to be clear, the loss we're showing is, that's how much they're losing running the cafe.
Correct, yes.
So is there any concerns about, from their standpoint, about continuing the operation or sustainability?
So I haven't, I haven't heard otherwise. I do know that, you know, at this time, we're going to be, in this month, leading into November, we'd be looking at the renewal of the contract, or the lease, I should say, for the year. Based on what I'm seeing, I would like to see, you know, this last year's revenue, so as soon as I get that, we'll make a recommendation as to whether we would be looking to charge them for the lease for the upcoming year. So I'll bring that information to you in October.
No, and my concern is if they were losing money even without a lease.
Right.
Are they going to keep going, right?
Yeah. I'm hoping they are, for the fact that, you know, the benefit of the student transition program is there, they, we are seeing higher numbers. We are seeing higher usage, the kids, the high school students have definitely found us, but so have other groups, and there's also been some more catering that's occurring with them. So I'll be able to give you more information in the next month.
Okay, thank you.
Julie.
Yes.
Noticing on the library usage.
Yes.
And it was on page 51 in our booklet. For July, it shows that the usage was 1,00704, which is great, I mean, that's like, looking like that's an all-time high.
It is.
Normally, you know, it's like 1,100 or 1,200. Is, was there a whole lot of stuff going on in the library in July, or are we starting to get back to the high points of attendance?
That is when we had some days of no electricity, and people were coming in and utilizing the building.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
That's right, that's right.
Yes, so we were very helpful to our community.
Okay, okay, okay. So that's.
We have moved furniture now to sit near plugs and outlets, so to make it easier for people when they come in to be able to sit and charge.
Okay.
So, yeah, there were a couple days that people had no power and utilized the library.
I was, I was hoping the, hoping it was going up, and now I know why that was, that's in July, okay. It's great that we were able to do that, though.
Yes.
I know a lot of people.
We serve a great purpose for that.
Very appreciative of having a place to go where it had, you know, air conditioning and it had electricity.
You're correct, absolutely.
This is the point in the meeting where we would have an opportunity from anybody from the public to make a comment. There is nobody in the public, so I won't read my little speech, because there's nobody here to make comments.
When Kathy's not here, the crowds don't show up, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
She's watching you.
I'm surprised she didn't comment on the activities. Committee reports. I will, I'll mention from the policy committee, what one of the, one of the reports did come from the policy committee tonight, that were, it's in the matters for action, but we've agreed to put it in item D, I think, to save any discussion for that. I will put it up, any HR committee, finance, events, strategy, building and grounds, bylaws, diversity, equity, and inclusion, any reports or comments from those, the chairs of those committees? Brian.
The strategic planning committee, we did have a meeting with Rethinking Libraries to kick off the yearly plan, but that's still in progress at this point.
Great, okay, good, good. Oh, and I, well, three quarters of there. Building and grounds, we reviewed that the reservation system that we use for our meeting rooms and stuff is being end-of-life done us. So Julie and her team are racing to find a, they gave you four months' notice?
For the scheduling, we saw one, yes, they gave us, I guess.
So a little bit, little bit uncool.
And there's a number of, of libraries that are affected by this particular company. We've had two demos so far, and one more will occur in two weeks, and then we will make some recommendations shortly after in order. I am, I am finding, just because I know you had some questions, Trustee Chair Currie, about the costs. It turns out those costs will probably be less than what we currently pay, which is great news, we'll actually probably be saving money, if not equal to what we were, instead of what I thought was going to be higher costs. Yep.
So you had a building and committee meeting this month?
Is that where, that was the meeting we had, right? Where we discussed that?
A building and ground committee meeting? No, I don't think so.
Oh, no, we didn't, you're right, that was, that was not, I'm sorry, that came up in finance as a, because of the.
In finance, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just thinking, okay.
You didn't miss the meeting.
Yeah, you didn't miss that.
You didn't miss it.
You didn't, you didn't miss the meeting. It came up in finance.
It came up in finance because she was projecting the cost effect there, so.
Okay.
We will have a building and grounds.
Yes, yeah.
Yes. So, sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
And security cameras. So I have a meeting, I think, already on the books for you to be aware of, coming up in October, for the security camera and server costs.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a closed session. We have some legal matters to review, and I would like to entertain a motion at this point from someone to go into closed session.
I so move.
I second.
Second. Any discussion? We call the vote. Brian.
Trustee Chair Currie.
Yes.
Trustee Gawalapu.
Yes.
Trustee Sturing.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes.
Okay.
And motion passes, 4-0.
We will go into closed session, we will be back. We will be back. At this point, we're going to consider the matters for library board action. Item, which is now, used to be B, item A, approved revisions to the meeting room policy, which has been reviewed by staff, attorney, and the policy committees. That is also on page 83 to 87 in our handout. I would entertain a motion to approve this so we can discuss it.
Move to approve?
Second.
Second. I can go.
Oh, okay. Any discussion?
Truly, the largest thing that's been added is if you look at page 86, it's the violation language that we didn't have in it previously. So should someone have a concern and we have to take it to that level? That language was recommended by the attorney. Okay. The policy, for the most part, works very well for us. There's just a few, a couple of things, as you can see in red, that were added and suggested or cleaning up so it wasn't redundant in some areas.
Okay, so we've, we crossed out that if it's canceled, fees are non-refundable, but then we've moved that?
Into reservations.
Into reservations, okay.
Just at a different location, kind of. In general, just making the language a little bit tighter, a little bit more specific and providing for the violations.
So political organizations, they cannot use the rooms, right?
No, we don't. So she, she said to take that out because it's really a resident, non-resident is how we work our policy. We don't question what people are actually doing, you know, their sense. And that allows us more flexibility for the space.
Okay. So now they can use it, right?
They have to rent.
Yeah, they have to rent and then use.
Right. And so it has to be just enclosed, and they can't have any, if you see the language, they can't have materials outside of it. So that way, there's no marketing or anything of the event. It's their own private event.
Trustee's want a little more time. No comments?
Looks good to me.
It's been moved. It's been seconded. Secretary, would you call the roll?
Trustee Gawalapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett, vote yes. Trustee Chair Curry?
Yes.
Policy passes 4-0.
And huge thank you to our staff, our attorney, and the policy committee for reviewing. Thank you.
Item B, which used to be item C, an approval of the 2023, 2024, 271 budget, which is on page 19 to 21, is the first quarterly amendment.
I so move?
It's been moved?
Yeah.
I can go second.
Been seconded. Any discussion? I think we've really discussed it before in the treasurer's report, so no discussion. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll on approving the amendment to the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, two seventy-one budget.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Chair Currie?
Yes.
Trustee Galalapu?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
Item C, which used to be item D, approval of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, two seventy-two budget and the first quarterly amendment, which shows up on page twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion to approve this. I mean, will we approve it?
I can go second.
You second, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? And once again, this is really something that our treasurer has explained to us before in the treasurer's report. No further discussion. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
Trustee Chair Currie?
Yes.
Trustee Galalapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Four-zero.
Great. Moving on to item D, which used to be item A, is the approval of revisions to the collection development policy reviewed by staff, attorney, policy committee, and DEI. As we've discussed before, this will be an opportunity, not necessarily to approve this policy tonight, but to make any comments to it is a very important policy. We're missing three members tonight and would like to have their input. And trustee Chair Currie's asked for a little bit more time so he could study it further as well. So at this point, I would just like to open up the floor to discuss this development policy so that if there are some things we can address as a body and get closer to a final revision, I'd like to do that. So I open that up to the trustees.
Okay. I mean, is it okay I'll jump in with some of my comments or thoughts?
Go ahead, go ahead. I think you have a few comments.
So on the page at the top of seventy-four, we have a sentence there that does not apply to websites available through Internet connections and everything else. That last sentence is slightly, there is that SEPA and NCIPA Acts, Children's Internet Protection Act, which are tied to the E-Rate system and things that libraries access. So I think we have certain obligations for computers that kids use and things like that.
Which we have filters on already in our youth department. When you use your library card, it actually authenticates already for the age of the card and the birthday.
Right. So this car, this second sentence then, I think is, it's either, the library has no control over the content of the Internet. I think that should be rephrased so that explains that either we follow the SEPA things and, you know, the federal laws or whatever.
Probably what I want to do would be to refer it to the actual Internet policy that we have, and then it has that language there.
Okay, we do refer to NCIPA or SEPA there.
We do have an Internet policy.
Okay, so then that's...
So we could say, subject to the Internet policy, the library has no control. And I think part of the reason that this is here is that we're making it clear that the library's not liable for what might be in the Internet.
Right. And the materials that we provide on the website, you know, those are downloadable books and stuff. Yes, we choose things, but, you know, the content of them, obviously, we're choosing materials, but there are going to be things that might be subject to. And so when you check, when you're checking them out, you're checking them out from the website, right? It's not a physical collection, so it's making note of that.
Right, I think, okay, I see the tricky thing there.
So the library doesn't have control, right? You're going through the Internet, you're going through services that we have. There are going to be books available. So that's the other part of it where it's saying, you know, we don't necessarily have that control of the content.
So circulating digital items, okay, including, okay.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so, right, that explains that, like, in Libya, we don't have every book that's on the beach.
Right. Does that make clarification then for you? Because, yes, SEPA is one thing, but really, this is about the fact that you go out on the Internet and stuff, so...
Well, that was my concern is we're, okay, so library, I mean, I just, I would actually just strike that entire sentence, to be honest. I mean, that entire little paragraph. I don't think anyone thinks the library, the Internet is library materials, per se.
I just think that is attorney language.
Yeah, I just don't let, that's, that second sentence, to me, is problematic because we are expected to have control over the Internet for certain users.
Um, I see, I'm...
Not necessarily.
No, we are, we would lose...
We're just complying. We don't have to comply with that and receive E-Rate money, but we do...
We would lose eligibility for E-Rate and some other federal programs.
Which is forty-five hundred dollars.
No, I agree, so I mean, right now...
But I'm just saying, but we do it, and yes, you are correct, but I think that I'm actually comfortable with the library has no control over the content of the Internet because the truth is, we don't.
Well, I like the idea, subject to the Internet policy of the library, we have no control over the content of the Internet. We have an Internet policy, but other than that, we don't have a control of the Internet.
Yeah, or say, I mean...
Okay.
But I like the, this acts a little bit like a disclaimer, and I kind of like that.
Yeah, I mean, so I, in my general reading of all this thing is disclaimer cannot appear like an abdication of responsibility. You know, we're, we're not Target, we're a municipal entity, we're, we serve all of our citizens, and they have various needs at various ages. And so, you know, a big part of that is, you know, what people do have their expectation, especially families of young children and childrens, et cetera, so. Okay, another area I wanted to find out is in the discussion of signage and stickers. So I want to make sure, nothing here, so, one thing is we talk about like developmental appropriateness or age appropriateness or content things. I know elsewhere, we discuss how parents are responsible for reviewing all the books and anything their children might access. Obviously, as a library, they expect us to provide some resources to help that, since I too do not want to read every sentence of every book my kid is reading. I want to make sure this would not prohibit us in the future from putting some sort of content descriptors or, so for example, like things you commonly see in television shows or movies. You know, we have those three, two layers now, right? The emotional, we have the R, PG thirteen, PG, that kind of ratings in the movies, but then you also have, like, what kind of things might be in there that are objectionable. So it'll say PG violence in language or PG sexual, you know, PG thirteen's mild sexuality, things like that. If we want to put some sort of guides to parents or guides to people so they know what they're encountering, is this going against that? And that's something, I'm going to give it another read, a deeper read, but that's...
Well, I think it's only as directional aid to facilitate access. So I think we've been pretty, you know, it's not...
What does that mean?
In terms of finding those types of materials in the, in the library. You know, that's how they're, if you're looking for Westerns, you're going to go to this area. Or you're going to look through broader in the collection, and when you see a Western, you're looking for that genre. So I'm...
Right, right. So directional can go in both directions, right?
I don't think we've ever wanted to put stickers in that would, you know, get into that area of age. I actually think it would draw more attention for children to, when they see an N-seventeen, to want to check it out, to be quite honest with you. Trustee Chair Currie? I know teenagers very well.
Yep.
And you're providing an opportunity then to draw them to attention rather than not.
Yeah, I think that's a...
I think that's a fair assumption.
I think it is. I think the alternative, when we go back to later in the, here where we discuss, I saw the reference to parents here.
So I think, I want it to be general enough.
Library respects each individual's right to supervise their children's choice of library materials. You know, to the extent that we're putting that expectation on parents, if we're not facilitating that in a helpful manner, and I'm not saying what it is now, I'm just saying we should have the right to do that. Like, we do that in our movie section, right? We do display whether or not the DVDs are...
The public, the actual, we don't, the library...
We don't cover it up fearing that the NC seventeen is going to attract kids, teenagers.
It's in there and already provided. All I can tell you is we don't look at any of that when we're purchasing and we don't put stickers on to identify that.
That's what I'm saying. This has, the policy, our disclaimers cannot act as an abdication of responsibility. That's my point, right? The biggest fear here is for a library is, as part of the community, we need to be different than like a Netflix log-on, right? We need to be different than just, you know, here's fifty bucks on your Amazon account, go crazy type of thing, right? That's kind of what they look for is, because if we can't provide that, I think that's a major failing on our part, and it's a vulnerability in the future. So my concern is not whether or not we do it right now. My question is, are we prohibiting ourselves from doing it? Because I'm not convinced, I'm not ready to make that statement that we wouldn't do it. You know, we're putting in this, like, and I'm jumping around here a little bit, so, and I guess that's okay. So when we went to this children's choice, because that's where the biggest area is, when we see the library doesn't have the right to act in loco parentis, do we still have monitors in the teen space?
Not for collections of people and what people are. We have monitors for the behavior of the building.
I recall one time, we made sure that adults, non-related adults weren't in the teen space or something like that. Didn't, isn't that what we had?
We're trying to give spaces to the age group that we think is appropriate for them so that they have spaces to sit in groups and can be in the building together. We're not looking, I don't think that's, yeah, that's not the purpose.
Again, I think that sentence is more of a, an abdication, we do do it in some respects. I think that's not fair to say we don't do it at all. So a parent who chooses to restrict materials, the parents must accompany the children when they use the collections.
I'm sorry, I don't know where you're at.
I jumped over the children's choice because the earlier...
Oh, to page seventy-seven?
Yeah, sorry, page seventy-seven. I mean, and this is why I wanted time to read this is, what's on page one influences what's on page three, what's on page four influences what's on page two. I'm just trying to raise some of the issues that I'm going to try and do a deeper dive in here. So to the extent, and I'll just be, I'll just put the thing out there. What's really concerning a lot of parents out there is there is a lot more sexualization of children for people who choose to perceive it that way. There's a lot more sexual content available in what we call a teenage book or in a, even a middle school book. There's a lot more graphics. The number of pictures that are in books weren't there, quite simply weren't there twenty, thirty years ago. And we can say...
We didn't have graphic novels back then.
Fair enough. You know, we called them comic books or something, they were for kids, right? So, you know, so I guess the, yes, the world out there is changing. The world out there does not, I don't view us as a free pass to the big publishing world or the big production world to dump whatever they want in front of our kids. I view us as a helpful filter, a curator, a gatherer of the good stuff, right?
Publishers are used as options for us to purchase materials and the librarians themselves make those choices, so...
Exactly.
I don't feel we're being pressured. We are offered lots of opportunities from publishing houses and independent houses to choose materials that we think might be of interest to our community.
No, I agree with that. I mean, I'm just saying, so, and with that expectation is also what your community's needs being reflected in those things. So for example, yes, we probably have a far larger Indian language book collection than many other libraries do, okay? So that's a good reflection of incorporating what the community's needs are and things like that. So I can say in general, there's a concern, and I have school-age kids, I talk to many other parents, it's wide out there, that there is a lot of stuff being put in front of kids that hasn't necessarily, the parents don't necessarily approve it, it's just showing up there, right? What's a TV Y seven on Netflix is really not what was a TV Y seven when I, you know, was camped in front of a TV. A lot of people do a lot of different things, so, and that's fine. I guess I can't control Hollywood, I guess I can't control, you know, the Boston publishing houses, but to the extent we're, you know, reflective of local needs and local things, I mean, we should be open to the needs of the community, so...
And to think of everyone's needs.
Absolutely. And that's why, again, this is where we have to make sure we're not trying to argue against the extreme. So that's where things like labeling or categorization or things like that can be very helpful. You know, we, for example, like, yeah, you can use a, the Western sticker. For the guy who must have a horse in a book, that's awesome. For the guy who can't stand cowboy hats, it's also awesome. So labels are good, and, you know, again, if we're, we shouldn't argue about what the label says when the whole book has its chance to make its case, right? You don't judge a book by its cover, but the cover's there for a reason. Continuing on, other issues I'm going to raise, selection criteria. I believe the written request for consideration should have the same limitations that the challenge has. So those should be that it must be submitted in writing, it should be from a Novi resident, and I would suggest that it should be one request for material per year per resident. We are aware that there are campaigns out there to try and hit every single library to juice certain publications and juice sales and things like that.
So you're looking for some of the information that's actually on the, on the form itself versus that's in the policy?
Well, I guess the policy, any form reflects a policy that creates it, right? So if we go forward, I can't remember, is it challenge?
I'm not sure where you're at.
Okay, so I'm back on page seventy-four.
Okay, oh, sorry, okay.
But I was trying to remember, okay, so our, in our reconsideration, we limit that to Novi residents?
Yes, we do.
And we require a written, fully complete written request? And I believe those should be the same standards for a consideration of books, of selection criteria?
Oh, for selecting?
Yes. And I would also, I would also say that probably one per person per year type of thing?
Well, I would want to do that.
It's not saying one book, it's just one request because we have fifty thousand residents.
That limits all of our people to make requests, to build our wonderful collection.
I agree, but we have fifty thousand people that want to make requests, right?
Well, then, who's going to monitor all that? That's a lot of work to monitor those individual people. That's a lot of work. And I wouldn't want, Ajita'd only give me one suggestion for her whole year when she might be reading a lot of amazing books, specifically, which, as an example, from the, from an Indian author that we don't have, and if she's helping us build the collection, I'd only be able to get one suggestion from Ajita.
Well, a suggestion doesn't mean a single book necessarily.
Well, no, because that's how specific we are going to be then with the reconsideration. So I, that, I mean, getting that kind of input, we're limiting our community if we do that because we want our community to provide the ideas and thoughts of what they need and want to build the collection. That's the whole point. It reflects the community.
Okay, I mean, my concern was more perspective of favoritism, but as long as you're balancing, as long as the second submittal from Ajita is at the bottom of the list and you're going through the other ones above it?
Well, we wouldn't do that because we take them as they come in, and if, if they, if they're, you know...
Well, then I think there's also some metering so that if somebody drops five hundred at the beginning of the year, it doesn't stop you from getting down in the list either, right? So I would hope that there's some sort of adjudication there. But I guess my point is, if you're going to require something on consideration, we limited consideration to Novi residents, written policies, written things, this has to have the same limitation. Because I will caution you guys, there are campaigns out there from publishers and other people where they hit every single library with the exact same request to try and juice statistics. And that, you can find that on Reddit in two minutes. So, let's see here. I noticed you crossed out the word, we had circulation statistics was usage?
I'm sorry, where are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, page seventy-five, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And like I said, my challenge is that I had a very busy week when this hit me, so I do appreciate everybody giving us time, but I just want to, that one was relatively minor, but I want to understand what that was.
It's just being broader with all the different types of circulation statistics that we actually...
Now, we do have non-circulating materials as well, right?
We do, but we really don't track how they're used. I mean, if they don't circulate, which, an example would be the local history room. They're available, they do get used, but we're not tracking that usage because it's not circulated and checked out.
Okay, so you guys just have to make a managerial decision that six sets of encyclopedias is too many or whatever, right?
We, right, we will, we do that already, yeah.
So, okay, other questions I had was, we have this, okay, so, in the display cases and cabinets...
What page are you on?
Seventy-six, sorry. We talk about, they may work with outside business, organizations, business partners, sponsors, but then we also say they're not for rental or something somewhere.
They are not for rental.
But we do have sponsors.
It will be up to the library to make those partnerships and connections for opportunities to maybe put a display in.
And...
So it leaves it more on the library to make those choices instead of someone walking in and saying, I want your display and I want to put X in. We want to make sure that it's something we, you know, it's a partner or someone that we'd be working with in order to control the displays for what we need them for. And for purposes that would match programming and resources and, you know, different collections and stuff that we would, we would put in.
Okay, so, so let's think about that. If a, if an organization has a display they're interested in putting out at some time, but it's not really within the interest of the, I guess, how do we, I, this begs a bigger discussion, how do we come up with programs or displays or what should be the subject matter and things like that?
Well, we're driving it. So I'll use an example, you know, Black History Month, you know, C-... Well, we're driving it, so I'll use an example, you know, Black History Month, you know, coming up in February. If we had a organization or a partnership or sponsorship where it would fit maybe the programming that Gail is doing for Black History Month, we might be working with that particular organization, maybe it's a nonprofit, I don't know. I'm just, you know, hypothetically giving you, but they might have artifacts and things that we would put into a display and then make them available for the whole community as it relates to a program we might provide in the future. So that gives us the opportunity to work with an organization that would fit the programming that we're doing at the library, or a collection, or a theme, or subject that we're highlighting. We might be looking for that. I'll use another one. We recently had, it was organic, organic foods and vegan lifestyle. We have a lot of books in our collection about vegan eating, and so we had them come in and they were a partner with us in order for us to put a display together. It was their materials and their books, some of the libraries as well, but to provide that display in order to make it attractive and of interest in promoting a program that we then had about vegan eating and clean eating. That's, yeah, as an example.
And so suppose organizations like Boy Scouts or Daughters of the American Republic?
Yeah, we would love to work the Boy Scouts. They have their Pinewood Derby, and we'd love to put their Pinewood Derby, you know, cars on display and maybe the history of it and things like that. We're always looking for those things.
Or like local BFW and things like that.
Right, but it needs to come, the reason why we wrote it this way is it should come from us driving it, what we need and want to then coordinate with the programming and the resources that we're providing. So we want it to come naturally from the library at first.
So what is a sponsor doing in that term, what does this word sponsor mean there then?
Well, that could be, I'll use an example of our ACT SAT groups that we've worked with. They become sponsors, they actually give us sponsorship money, and maybe they have materials or artifacts or information about it that we could create a display with. I don't know, but that would be an example of a sponsor. Or maybe a local business. And so if the local business fits doing a financial program.
Yeah, but like, we discussed the financial literacy thing.
Maybe they would then give us information and artifacts and posters and display stuff that would, you know, fit a financial topic.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And so if it said ABC Bank on the bottom of all those materials, that's okay then?
It would be, because they're working with us. We establish those partnerships and sponsorships first. We make sure that they fit us and our mission and our values, yes.
And then, and I'll, this is an area I really want to lose data on. Display of library materials, this section kind of read a hundred percent as disclaimer and zero percent of what we're actually providing to the community here, so. And I, again, I haven't done it word by word, but at the very end here, the display of library materials is not inhibited by the possibility that particular works may inadvertently be seen or by coming into possession of children and young adults. Four of our display locations are possibly, five, are exclusively targeted to young adults and children by combination of geography and the materials put there.
Not all of them have, I mean, yes.
We got, we got two that are very clearly tied in teams now.
Rooms in the library, there's no walls, so inadvertently that's going to happen, which is why I appreciate.
I think when the, the display is underneath the sign that says teen stop, or the display is on the windowsill in the room that's called the teen stop, I think we can fairly say that that display is targeted towards the teens.
Sure, you're correct in that regard.
So the possibility that teens, who are children, might see that.
So a child walking up there might inadvertently.
The teen itself is a child, just legally speaking, to be clear, the teen is a child.
Yes.
Okay, and so the possibility that the teen is see there is very high, and that does need to factor into what we put there.
If they're teen materials and teen related and teenage appropriate.
If it's like Nazi propaganda, is that okay to put there?
If the age group is appropriate for that, I would go for the age group that the specific audience is for.
Nazi propaganda might be in your teen section.
I'm not, I'm not going to answer, but I, I think we're pushing it.
Right now, it reads like, it reads like there would be seventy-five days for me to remove Nazi propaganda.
So what you're saying is my staff would be putting that. I don't believe my staff would put that type of stuff out there to be pushing that information.
They did it at least once, so.
And you got your point across, Trustee Turner Curry, in public.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's why I do want time, and that's why I do want time to go through this, and, and like I said, so. I totally respect that our goal is a wide spectrum of opinions, viewpoints, genres, et cetera. In all this, I will go back to the same thing I said, that there is a, a wide range of what people believe is appropriate in terms of sexuality, sexualization, sex explicitness of those things in the literature or in books being put out there and things like that. So we, before we finalize this, as we're revisiting this, I think that is something that needs to be discussed. And that's something, we have to figure out how we're going to do it. You know, I, if the, I mean, this, the latest annual report, the folks at Target had to say that some of their decisions on merchandising turned off large segments of their population and have badly affected their store traffic. Okay, so these are not, the folks at Budweiser will be saying the same thing in their upcoming thing. We cannot have a library lose its sense of being a safe space that people perceive. And yes, we are, those perceptions benefit us, you know, so. I'm fine either way. We want to say, look, your children may be exposed to all these things there, let's just say it formally, okay? We don't filter books for graphic imagery, right? Now, the alternative, we could say is, you know, let's use some of the things that are well accepted, like, so the law firm at Pillsbury Winthrop has a nice thing where they, they help broadcasters, for example, because there are many, big and small, all who follow the same rules, right? On obscene materials, indecent materials, profane materials. And I, I suggest we actually incorporate those things and say, yes, they will be there. This is a, I mean, we could go either way. They will be there, this is a library, our job is not to filter those, that's your job. And then let's discuss whether or not we give some aids to help people filter that out, okay? Or we also, I would prefer that we put some expectation on the stuff that's targeted towards children. The thing, you know, that those things should not be there. And that's my point, is there are, and we've seen this at other libraries, at other school districts, there are things that if you hold it up in front of the cable broadcast, the cable broadcast gets cut because they're covered by these laws. And rightly or wrongly, there may be a perception, there is a perception among parents that the library is a safe space, kind of like broadcast television at the eight o'clock hour, you know? So I think that's, I think there's a lot of work to be done on this. I don't want to think that this is only button up and say we looked at it and shut it down, because that is an issue that's out there. So I think I've kind of done a survey of the different areas that concern me. I appreciate the board giving me time to write up more detail on these things, so.
Is it possible to have your information and writings in the next week or so? Because it's working with the policy committee, the DEI committee, my staff and the attorney in order to bring it back in a timely manner for the next meeting, which will be in October.
Just looking at my calendar, I think it'll probably be two weeks before I can get you everything. I can probably get you things in pieces that you can start working on. And I'm also okay too, if we want to, you know, approach some of these changes in a piecemeal fashion, so. You know, I'm not, if there's an urgency to get this done, I'm kind of not aware of it, but.
I do think there is, I think we've had a question from a community member on one part of it that should be addressed. You know, this policy was just approved back in two thousand twenty-two in November, so it's not even a year old. And you had the opportunity then to weigh in very much, and I'm surprised these things wouldn't have come up then, and yet here they are.
Yeah, I mean, it's, seeing the policy in action is what makes, crystallizes your clarity on what it means, right? So, yes, I've.
Which the policy has been very helpful and has worked well.
I mean.
To date.
It has, but, you know, as I've shared, there have been some questionable materials put forth, and so that's why I feel we.
I haven't had any formal.
Correct.
Thank you.
They've been put forth informally.
You know, my comment, I'm on the, I'm on the policy committee, and I did support this policy as it came out of the committee as written. You know, I'm always open to some, you know, some corrections, some modifications, but I think it's generally a well-thought-out policy. I put a lot of emphasis on the section that talks about selection criteria, and that is the ultimate responsibility for material selection rests with the library director who operates under these guidelines established by the library board. And I think that we can worry about these ultimate terrible things that we don't want to see there, but I think that doesn't happen when you, when you have a library board and a, I mean, a library director, library staff that is taking a lot of time and interest in deciding which materials to select. I would strongly oppose any type of a grading system where our library staff goes beyond what the publisher does to try to identify graphic this, or sex that, or violence that. I think that would be a misuse of our library staff time to do that. We're trying to collect the best material we can and display it, hold it in our collection, but I don't think we want to become, you know, like a motion picture advisory to label things that might or might not be in there and potentially be liable if we miss something. You know, that, that I don't think, you know, our library staff doesn't read each and every book before it gets displayed, and I think that would be putting an enormous burden on them. And I think that doesn't do the most good, the most good for the most, most people. And I do think there's a little bit of a sense of urgency in moving this forward, because this is a very current topic, and it would be better to have a policy, the new policy in place than the existing policy. And so I would urge that we move forward quickly, very open to any, you know, comments or corrections.
So along those lines, I have reached out to one publisher, I have another letter drafted. I'm trying to understand from their standpoint how they're assigning age appropriateness and things like that. Because you're right, the industry as a whole does rely on self-regulation. It's not like publications, like, it's not like movie, motion pictures, it's not like the record industry, the music industry. So that is a challenge. I would like to add, ask though, and understand, as we develop our displays and things like that, how are the books selected?
Books selected for purchase?
For the displays. So I would say.
I'd have to go back and, I would have to talk to each of my employees to find out, you know.
Are the books and displays, have they been specifically selected by one of our librarians, I guess?
Yes, yes, all of our librarians.
Because I guess Mark President Sturridge, one place I would draw a distinction is, a book on a shelf is a book on a shelf, a book on a display has the imprimatur of the people that put it out there. And so I think there is some editorial aspect where playing we put things out there. So I would like to know how those books get out there.
They are chosen by librarians.
I don't disagree with the distinction between in the collection and on display. I don't disagree.
Right, and my thought is on display, I think it's, and that's where I want to formulate. You know, and I don't even know if displays should be separate from collection development as a policy area.
I think it relates very well to the collections.
That's a categorization thing in a document, but I'm just saying, I, to me, philosophically, they're quite different. I have no doubt on the shelves will be any number of topics that I don't care about, any number of topics that will go into depths that, you know, we are a library, we're a source of information, things need to be there. But I go back to my prior statement, things on display have a certain endorsement, and I think that to the extent we're paying people to put them there, it's not unreasonable to know what's going there. So I guess, yeah, I mean, one question I would like to know is, you know, does everything go up? Is it actually curated by our librarians, are we using external lists, external sources, external recommendations?
They will definitely use different lists and things to create those displays as well, but they are chosen and put out by librarians.
And are they reviewed by librarians then, as they're put out, or?
The books?
Yeah.
I would, I would guess they probably are not reading everything. I would put that out there right there, there's no way that we would have the time to be reading everything that goes out, but they're probably looking at the cover and the information, and they might look at if it's a popular material and then put it out. But they do refer to different sources and different lists and things in order to create them. The American Library Association is one of our, you know, one of our resources that we would use, they create a lot of lists. So is the Michigan Library, so are all the publishers, School Library Journal, Kirkus Review. These are all different review sources that we have, that we.
And we do see that challenge, that the, the perception of appropriateness is different in academia and some of these more far-flung places than they are necessarily in the hometowns of America. And so I think.
But if it's a book of popularity and it has, it's been, you know, they, they might put it out because of its trending and popularity at the time, I mean, that's.
I mean, there's any number of things trending on Twitter right now that I would not want our library to put on display?
Well, I leave that up to my librarians to make that judgment, and I think they have made very good judgment.
But I think it's not, but as we said, it's not, as we said, that President Sturridge read, the director with the advice of the board, we can put in policies there, and that's what I hope to do, so.
I would, I would hope not to restrict too much, you know, to be able to.
Certainly not too much, I mean, we want, we want this to be a place of information. Yeah, I mean, yeah, nobody wants to do too much anything, but, you know, again, nobody's going for the edge case. Ultimately, everyone's goal is to find things that are developmentally, developmentally appropriate when they hit people's hands, and.
I wouldn't always use developmentally appropriate, and I think that's, yeah.
So for example, I'll give you an example. There are a number of treatises out there that'll pick a main character in another religion and skewer him in a hundred different ways. And I think those kind of reading things are okay for adults, okay? I don't really have a problem with that. I really have a problem when people choose to take those things, put some nice cartoons in it, and then make a picture book out of it, and then put it in front of kids. That's proselytization, and that's actually the opposite of, you know, the number one thing about diversity is recognizing that we have people with all different values in their houses, and yet that we should be able to come together in spaces, you know? And, and we do that, and I think there's, that's the thing, is to have that respect for all those things. And I'm, like I said, my number one concern comes down to the displays we put in front of children, and I do not, I categorically do not accept the fact that we can abdicate all responsibility to lists coming from far-off publishers. And yes, as librarians, there isn't it. That is part of the job, is finding the right materials for the right people in the right fashion.
And I believe my librarians do that.
Okay, but, again, I just want to make sure we, right now, as you'll see across the place, there are a number of books that not everyone agrees with, and we'll leave it at that right now, but let's try and clarify.
I think they have a very good pulse on the community, they listen to the students that come in the building, they listen to parents, you know, they listen to, I mean, they have a very good pulse.
No, we have great librarians, I mean, I just think we need to, in times like this where obviously the pressures they're getting from the outs, like, from organizations like the ALA, from the different publishing houses and things like those.
We don't feel any pressure from the ALA.
Absolutely, the ALA writes things a certain fashion, and people in the industry, I mean, that would be like, it's not, it's not, when you say it's pressure, it's the, within the, within a profession, there tends to be certain, I forget the right word for it. A conventional wisdom can develop within a profession that is actually often not shared by the customers or outside that profession. I'll give a great example of civil engineering. All civil engineers love traffic roundabouts, okay? Huge numbers of people think we're idiots, okay? I mean, that's just, that's an example of the disconnect that can happen. Because when people talk to people within the profession and they, you know, things get insularized, so. Okay, I mean, that's just a challenge here, I mean, what we do is, you know, this is, you know.
I would like to share with Mark, because I did review this policy. My concern is, is that we don't get a, we don't develop a policy with so many checks and balances that our librarians find it really tough to do their job. I mean, that's, they have a, there is a level of creativity and a level of, you know, basically a level of, you know, of, you know, things that are built into their, their job that is why they become librarians, that I don't want to put too many handcuffs on them that it makes, makes their job really, you know, so I, I'm really looking, you know, in changing, making changes to this policy, I'm looking for some very broad guidelines that can apply across the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this was reviewed by the attorney, right?
It was.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. Or did you have any comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I have clarification? So I would be bringing this back for a second draft in October, is that the, is that the same?
That would be my desire, I think I want to, want to push this along.
Okay. So I, I will need to have.
I'll try to get my comments, and anything that I don't get in, I reserve, as any board member, right to bring it back subsequently, so.
But it would be helpful to just, because I'm working with a number of groups in order to get.
Absolutely, absolutely, I, you know, like I said.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Some move?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.